We can come to order, please, I'd appreciate it. We'll open our December the 7th council meeting at 7:01.
Can everybody hear?
Yeah, okay. Testing one, two, three, four. All right. I don't need to start all over. We're opening our regular city council meeting at 7:01. Liz, if I could have the roll call, please.
Councilmember Payne, here.
Here.
Powers, here.
Sheldon.
Here. I'd like everyone to rise for a silent prayer. Remain standing, please, for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every justice and law.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We'd have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sactmetracables.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 a.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address councils should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Okay, thank you. Is there agenda approval additions and are any deletions at this time? None? And there's no presentations. I believe we have a couple of public comments.
Yes, under Government Code, Section 5495-4.3, members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt City limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. Steve Besenson, I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name. There are seats in the front row. We did have reserved for families, but I hope all families here, so feel free to take any empty seats.
Good evening. I live within the city limits. On September 12th of this year, I was walking my little terrier around our neighborhood when all of a sudden two pit bulls came after us and started attacking me and my little dog. So I picked up my little dog so my wife wouldn't kill me. And a kid came out of his house and I told him to call 911 and he brought out the phone book and the phone. And finally, the dogs backed off and by the time the neighbor got me and my dog into the car and took us home, I drove back to talk to the officer who was James Merchant, badge number 165, and gave him the story and then went back home. And he came by the house after everything was done to make sure my dog and I were all right. I'd just like to compliment the chief on the police department that he has run before he leaves. And hopefully Officer Merchant got a letter in his file for the courtesy that he gave me and my family. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, before I call up this last speaker, we will be holding public comment again after the new council members leave because we do have some public comments that they want to address to the new council. So the last one I have, under this public comment, is Dave Doggrin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dave Doggrin, citizens of Galt are going on 19 years now. First of all, I would like to mention that to the mayor, I'm not here to upstage anything going on here, but this is a special friend of mine. In fact, a lot of people are in the room. Congratulations to the incoming council members. I wish you everything good for you. Tonight, I'd like to honor a friend of mine who I didn't know at all until the summer of August of 2006, when I heard a knock on my front door. And the gentleman stood out there and he says, "Hello, can I have a little bit of a moment of your time? My name is Don Haynes and I'm running for Galt City Council." Well, being from San Francisco, we would elect people and never see them except read about them in the paper. And this kind of struck me very interesting, so I took advantage of the situation and I said, "Well, it looks like you're a little tired, Mr. Haynes. Would you like to come in and have a seat and sort of rest your feet? You must have been out walking quite a bit." And he said, "That would be great." About 40 minutes later, after me chewing his ear and getting a few things answered, the questions that I had at the moment, he left my apartment and I said, "Mr. Haynes, I hope it was worth it because you just got my vote." I didn't know that I was going to be involved in the city at all at that time. And a year had passed by and then I bumped into Mr. Haynes again, and this time it was Councilman Don Haynes. And we were campaigning to help our police department here in Galt with the Measure R campaign of 2008. And we would meet at the police station every Wednesday and I got to know Don quite well. And Don, I'm gonna miss you. We've started something I never thought would ever happen. Usually, people are out campaigning and, you know, you go about your merry way and stuff like that. It's his business to attend to and I can understand that. But I think that I'm not losing you as a friend, I'm probably gaining more of your time. And I want to wish you well. I was informed by a close friend of mine who works at Galt, pardon me, it's a good supermarket also, but works at Save Mark. And he said you like historical things or something of that nature. So what I'm about to give you, I hope that maybe you'll find some time to take a look at in your, you know, whenever you can. Like you to have is very much a goodbye gift, a farewell gift, or I'll see you next year or see you around town or... Thank you very much, everyone, for allowing me to do this. I felt really, I wanted to do something from down here.
Thank you, Dave. Do you have any other speakers?
That's all the speakers for now.
Okay. So the next item, we'll move into the election results.
Okay. The councils where the general municipal election was held in November to fill three seats on the city council. The ballots were canvassed by the Sacramento County Registrar of Voters and we received the certificate of facts. At this time, it would be appropriate for the city council to adopt the resolution reciting the facts of the elections, declaring the results, and other matters as required by law.
Any comments by council or discussion? We're looking for a motion.
I'm moved to adopt the resolution.
I'll second. Seconded. Any further discussion? None? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Haynes?
Aye.
Councilmember Powers?
Mayor Sheldon?
Aye. What was it going?
Your best guess.
Oh, okay, right. Okay. Don, my fellow council member, could I ask you to come to the podium, please?
You sure, yeah.
Don, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
I enjoyed it. I enjoyed our disagreements, but you know what? We argued with good faith and I really appreciate that. Have a plaque here for you, for your appreciation.
Thank you, Mayor.
For your service.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you. I do want to say, if you were, thank you very much. I'd like to thank, there's a lot of people to thank for my having been up here for four years. Most certainly, my wife Maria, me and all my children, Kimberly and Karen, my son Don Jr., I have two grandsons, John Michael and Nicholas, that I'll now have more time to spend time with them, and that's a lot to me, too. There's a lot, like I said, there's a lot of people to thank. And I gotta thank staff for all the work and effort they've put in over the last four years that I've been here and the support that they've provided me. And when I had a question, it was always good to be able to pick up the phone and get an answer, and that meant a lot. I think the people I should probably be thanking the most here is really the citizens of the community who voted me into office and gave me this opportunity because it really truly is a privilege to be able to sit on this council and represent the people of Galt. And I've done it with great pleasure. I feel that any votes that I've made over the last four years, I made those votes with you in mind. I always did it in your best interest. And it makes me proud to stand up here and say that. I think one of my greatest accomplishments to have been here was with Measure R, putting more officers on the street. That was my platform. It was my primary goal when I ran four years ago. I didn't do it alone. I mean, there's a lot of people who has helped with this. Chief Catalico is most certainly one of the major players here. He's assisted and without his help, I'm not so sure we would have made it. Mary Lou, you were there, you helped. We were very happy, very pleased you contributed and helped us out. There's a lot of people there. And it helps the community and it's going to, it's gonna be a legacy that'll live on and on because that revenue is going to provide you more officers as time goes on and as this economy rebounds and builds, you're going to see more officers on the streets, hopefully in the parks, on bicycles. This is going to be one fantastic community as things start to change, so I'm very proud to have been a part of that. I want to thank Jason for all of his support. He's been very good about answering calls, emails, he's very prompt. I feel very good about leaving council with a city manager who's as well, very skilled and very knowledgeable as he is. And it makes even that much more comfortable knowing Steve Rudolph is gonna be sitting there next to it because you've got two very experienced and knowledgeable people and they will guide this council and the community through some very hard times that we may be experiencing in their future. And I think that's extremely important. Liz, I want to thank you. You've always been, you've always treated me equally, like anybody else, probably a little bit better than others, but I'm not gonna complain. You know, Mary Lou, I'm glad to see you're sitting up there. I've always said that I thought you would do a good job. And I know you've worked hard, you've tried many times to be up there and I think it's paid off, so I congratulate you. Randy, it has been a pleasure. I appreciate everything, you know, you've been able to do here and contribute. And Barbara, I do appreciate the things you have done because I always feel that you have done some good in the community and I think if you hadn't done it, it probably never would have been done. Inez, I do want to thank you for doing such a good job in our finance department. You've always been accurate about your numbers or you've come in well enough that we've, you know, better off than what we thought we would be and that's always good news. And Kurt, you know, you were very good. I mean, you're a contributor to, most certainly, especially in the early, the first couple of years, you were able to answer a lot of questions and I was able to overcome a lot of issues with your help. Same thing with you, Greg. I mean, you guys were there. And Paula, Voice, and I want to say a thank you to everybody because I really do appreciate everything you've done and I want to thank the community one more time. Thank you very much.
Comments?
I would like to comment on Councilman Haynes and say that I remember appointing him to the Parks and Rec Commission and then we worked on the Isle of Mike Park. He brought the cakewalks and the sack races back and those are good memories and I wish you and your family the best.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Don, it was short and sweet, but in the times that we did work together on Measure R, I really appreciated learning from you. When I got up here temporarily, you and I were over here on this side and when I had some questions about everything, you were always very gracious and let me know what was going on and I think that you extended your hand across the aisle.
Thank you.
And I think you did a great job for the city.
Thank you very much.
I'm gonna miss you.
That means a lot, Mary Lou. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
You did. You were dedicated.
I appreciate that.
And you realized how much it's involved.
Yeah, you learn a lot.
Yeah, that little bit of stipend and you do it as an elected official, we do it from the heart, you know.
And this really is a, it's a voluntary job if you really get down to the nuts and bolts because you'll never get paid back for the time you put in. And I know that each and every council member that comes up here, they dedicate their lives to this job in many ways and people don't realize what's put into it, but I congratulate all of you and I know you're gonna do a good job.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to ask Mary Lou to step down off the dais and I'd like to call up Mark Cruz and Mike Singleton to join me. Hold your mic up a little higher, those are, we want to make sure we have them too. So if you will, please repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Mary Lou Powers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
That I am an elected official.
That I am an elected official.
Of the city of Galt.
Of the city of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And as Michael Markson joins all of us, I think it's time, oh, come here.
That scares me.
Okay, before we go on, do councilmembers want to say anything? Have anything to say? Mike?
Sure. As Mr. Haynes stated, this is a voluntary position and a lot of responsibility. I'm fully aware of that and I take all this criticism and advice and music, that's my ability. Thanks again, Don, for everything you've done for us, Mary. We're council, we're here to work for you. That's why we're here. You elected us into the office and like we all said, I'm gonna do it to the best of my ability. I want to thank my, I want to carry on to my father, my campaign committee, Tracy's, Evelyn, Daisy, Maddie Shepherd, who's not so far, not feeling well, I hope she does get well soon, and all the others that help me. I will open office hours. Please feel free to contact me if you have any issues you want to discuss. Get involved with your community. We don't know what you want if you don't come and help. So I encourage you to get with your neighbors and friends and come talk to us. That we do what you want to do for you.
Mark?
Oh, sure. You scare me of that thing first. I pretty much would mirror what Mike has said, but I also want to send some special thank yous out to several others. First of all, without the help of my heavenly Father for guidance and humility, I couldn't have done this, I couldn't have taken the steps. My wife, who gave me her patience and understanding as I was running for office and made the actual running possible. My family, who gave me the strength to complete the task. And most importantly, the citizens of Galt who through their vote proved they believed in directions and ideas I had presented and trust me to follow through on those. I don't take that responsibility lightly and I'll continue to do it to the city and the people of the city, which, and thank you for your trust.
Well, I do first of all and foremost, I want to thank my family and my friends who have stood by me for a very long time, through thick and a lot of thin to get myself up here and I want you all to know that I appreciate all the love and support that you've given me all these years. I want to especially say a little shout out to my mom, who isn't here with us anymore, but always knew that I'd get here. It's my pleasure to serve the city. I've been on the planning commission for more than eight years and on the architectural review. To let you know that I always have an open door policy, just give me a thing and I'll try to get back to you as soon as I can and I'm very honored to be here and I want to thank you all very much.
Do I have to do it again now that Mike is working? No, just thank you, everybody. Thank you. Look at this little second.
Any other councilmembers?
No.
At this time, I'd like to ask the attorney to make a few...
Good evening, councilmembers.
Good evening.
Before we get to the next item on our agenda, which is the elective mayor and vice mayor, I just wanted to go over the process for these two steps. Nominations for mayor and vice mayor do not require a second. Any member, without being recognized, can make a nomination. You have the opportunity to nominate yourself if you so desire. After the nominations for mayor have been received, the clerk will close the nominations and then we will vote for the mayor in the order of the names received. If we go through the names nominated and no one is selected as mayor, we will repeat the process until we get somebody elected in that position. We'll go through the same process for the election of the vice mayor. The new mayor will carry out that process, will open up the floor for nominations, take the names, close it, and again, we will vote in the order of the names received. Are there any questions relating to the process?
Hereby open up the nominations for the position of mayor.
I nominate Barbara Payne.
I would also nominate Barbara Payne.
Are there any other nominations? Okay. When I close the nominations for the position of mayor, then I'll do a roll call vote starting on my left. Councilmember Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Yes.
Councilmember Stoughton?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell? Yes. Congratulations.
I always wondered what was behind here.
And I turned the devil over to Mayor Payne.
I noticed. I wanted to hear it.
Okay. Let me just say, before we move on with the elections, that I am so looking forward to serving with these new council members and the old winters well, and I think...
But thank you, Barbara. Your first appearance, I thought.
Initiated now. But I think we have a great team. I think we have a great city manager to work with and I'm very confident that we're gonna see a new coalition arising from this council and with the community, whether we're talking about working with the businesses, the schools, but mostly each other and the staff. So thank you so much for honoring me with this position. So now nominations are open for vice president or vice mayor.
I'd like to nominate Raymond Powers.
No, we don't. You need a second, but I would love to do that anyway. Are there any other nominations for vice mayor? If not, we will close the nominations and... Mayor Sheldon, mayor. Crazy night, everybody. Okay, roll call vote. Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Sheldon?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Oh, now you gotta move again. I'm gonna get the wrong way. I'm glad I picked this seat. I think I chose it. I don't want any, any running around. He's already there, so you gotta move. You gotta move, he's already there.
Have you jumped over, Mary Lou?
At this time, we will continue with some public comments and I think we have a speaker sheet. Oh, okay.
Want some cake?
Okay. We will do that after we have our break and refreshments out in the lobby for everybody to come enjoy it and celebrate.
I want some cake.
Okay. We will do that after we have our break, and refreshments out in the lobby, for everybody to come enjoy it and celebrate.
Oh, okay. I don't feel great.
Mayor Payne? You know, I'm... At this time, we will continue with some public comments, and I think we have a sheet sheet. Oh, okay. Take time? I got cake on my hands. Okay, now, we haven't approved the consent challenge, have we?
Yeah.
So we got to go back and catch that.
Well, we're going to do the public comment now.
Public comment, and Al's going to just say something about the class, and then we'll go to the calendar.
And then we follow the regular?
Right.
Okay. Now, I'm used to reading each item, if you would rather do that, or if you...
It's a public hearing, so I don't need to... Because I know we have a lot of things to do. So we need to get going.
And you can call us, your mic's on, you can call us if it's...
Folks, if we could get started, come on back. Okay. Is this a cattle call? Okay. Secretary of Defense?
I don't think it was working.
If everybody could come back in, please. Voice wants to go home.
Your husband's here.
Yeah, he was here, yeah.
I didn't know that.
He was here.
He was right there. He didn't run out.
Yeah. Okay. Mike went out. I like it. Hi, girl. This is a nice...
You look short.
Yes, I know, huh? They love to do these chairs. Oh, wrong. Don't make me laugh.
I'm glad you're sitting there.
And then do that.
It'll fix your brain.
Gee.
There you go.
Okay.
Oh, I had some stuff over there, but...
Ah, I got cake on my hands. Okay, now, we haven't approved the consent calendar, have we?
Yeah.
So, we gotta go back and catch that.
Well, we're gonna do the public comment now.
Public comment, and, and Al's gonna just say something about the plaque, and then we'll go to the calendar.
And then we follow the regular.
Right.
Okay. Now, I'm used to reading each item, if you would rather do that, or if you...
It's not in public hearings, but I'm used to it. Because I know we have a lot of things to be considered, so we need to get going.
And you can call us, your mic's on, you can call us if it's...
Folks, if we could get started, come on back.
Jason's about to round up.
Okay. Is this a cattle call? Okay. Thank the Lord. Did you stick into your mic again? I don't think it was working. If everybody could come back in, please. Voice wants to go home.
Who is her husband's here?
Yeah, he was here, yeah.
I didn't know that.
He was here.
He was right there.
He's just right out. Yeah. Okay. Mike went out.
This is a nice...
You look short. Yes, I know, huh?
He's off the hook.
Sorry. Do these chairs. Oh, wrong. Don't make me laugh. And then do that.
It'll fix your brain.
Gee.
There you go.
Okay.
Oh, I had some stuff over there, but... Follow my doctor.
Okay. If we're ready to get started again?
We're missing one council member.
Are they under their mic?
Look at that picture.
Mic's coming.
Uh, probably the laptop that was with Tom. Is anybody saying Mikey? Mikey.
Here we go already. I know, this is gonna be crazy. Was that not good? No breaks for my... Okay. I only said that once. Is there a policeman in the house that could go round up our other councilman? Handcuff him and bring him in.
I don't do that. Why not? I don't want to be a fine duty problem. What are you getting at me? Who cares? Is that coming over the bit?
All good. Get that square, I thought you were gonna do it like this. Nice thing to do up here.
Well, it's part of the dress. Yeah. Smart. Smart.
The information consent calendar. We're gonna be right here, so we're gonna have public comment one more time.
At this time, we will continue with the regular semi-regular meeting, and we're going to have a public comment again, and we have a speaker sheet.
Al Baldwin? Oh. And do you have first name? That's okay. Well, not really, no.
Al Baldwin, one of the concerned citizens of Galt, and of course, it's a community of character, and I think you'll all find that out if you haven't already. And, uh, I wanted to make two announcements tonight. There's two things going on, and you're gonna hear more about this by a person that is involved with it personally, and, well, I am too, but this is a very special person that's involved. She does a lot of work. But it's gonna be the, uh, Galt City Council Youth Committee, and they're gonna have Crafting with Santa. And I'll tell you, it's Saturday, this Saturday coming up, December 11th, and it's from nine to 12. And if you're out there and you're watching this, uh, get over here at Shabola, I call it Shaboya. Everyone calls it different things, but Shaboya, Shabola. And, uh, it's gonna be great, and it doesn't cost any money. It's free. You bring your children in there, there's gonna be crafts for them. You can sit them down. Santa'll be there, there'll be personal pictures taken, and it'll be for the first, I believe, fifty, uh, thirty families. So, get there early and get your pictures taken, and you can take your own pictures too with your own camera, but these will be kinda nice to have. Uh, and they're free, there's no cost to them, everything's free. Donations will be there, if you wanna donate something, which would be great. There'll be arts and crafts, sponsored Christmas cookies to frost and decorate, face paintings by Galt High Art Club, and Christmas skit performed by the Galt High Drama Club. And I'm not gonna go into it anymore because the experienced one is gonna come up here in a minute and, and talk. And also, I want to congratulate most of you, all of you that are new, uh, on the council right now, and I'm looking forward to watching you, and maybe even, uh, jabbing you once in a while, 'cause that's my reputation. Uh, hopefully, uh, it's Galt's growing, and not in the way that many people think it's growing, but it's growing in character. It's also, uh, uh, having some wonderful families, wonderful children being grown up here. So, I think, uh, if anybody's out there watching this, you wanna know a place to go, get out of that hustle and bustle and all that, come on to Galt. We got plenty of homes here, they're great, they're beautiful, they're big, they're small, they're medium, the schools are wonderful. The economy is a challenge for everybody, but we seem to be doing pretty good with our city. So, come on down and, and, uh, enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Al. Emily Hernandez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emily Hernandez, I'm with the Galt Council Youth Committee. I actually said probably everything that I was gonna say in the beginning about Crafting with Santa. This year is actually different from most years because in the years before, we used to have people buy their way in, but this year, yes, it is for free, because we are hoping that people will donate instead of paying to come in. Um, right now, we're doing our bylaws, we're reinstating our bylaws, and we're hoping to get, um, approved by you guys pretty soon, because, um, this year, because it's our, we're just recently, after three years, um, renewing them. We're hoping, because we have two new high schools, that will, this, these new bylaws will equalize both Galt High and Liberty Ranch. I'm, me and one other Liberty Ranch student are the only Liberty Ranch students who are from com, the youth committee. Also, um, Galt High School, they have a government club, and they are buying, they're selling T-shirts to raise awareness for breast cancer, and that's actually going really well, because they sold all their T-shirts over at Galt High, and we're hoping that soon, we'll be able to sell them over at Liberty Ranch as well. Um, I'd like to congratulate the three new members of the council. I'm sure you guys will do very well and change this town for the better. And also, I'd like to congratulate Barbara Payne for becoming mayor. I've known Barbara Payne since I was in seventh grade, and she's helped me out in so many ways, because she made me a better person, and I've helped, she's helped me very much. And I'd like to thank, thank her for everything, and also to congratulate her.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah. Um, because there's gonna be three new council members, it's also gonna affect the youth committee, because there's gonna be new adult members that are gonna join the youth committee. We are hoping that the youth of the committee will be able to have an active participation in finding those adult members, if adults are gonna be changed, because the adults are gonna be our mentors, and we're hoping that the adults are gonna have a less active role in the committee, because it is youth committee, and we really hope that, because they are just gonna be our mentors, that they're gonna help us out, not just control the whole entire committee. Um, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, Emily.
Uh, we will continue with the consent calendar. If Liz, you would read the items, please?
We have nine, nine items tonight. Number one, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of November 16th, 2010. Number two, approval of the City of Galt warrants. Number three, budget adjustment for Northeast Area Stockton Boulevard Bicycle Lane Connection Improvements. Number four, appropriation of funds for police staff team building exercise. Number five, annual activity report, uh, Health and Safety Code 33080.1, section D E N F, for the redevelopment agency of the City of Galt. Number six, City of Galt Culture and Recreation Fund for the year ended June 30, 2010, financial statements. Number seven, an ordinance amending Chapter 15.04 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to buildings and construction. Um, that's adoption of the ordinance. Number eight, adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 15.28 of the Galt Municipal Code relating to the fire code. And number nine, 2009, 2010, annual report of financial transactions of community redevelopment agencies.
Nothing was pulled, was, is there any discussion?
Yes, uh, actually, nobody'd ask us, I couldn't be here, and my poll number four.
Okay, number four. Appropriation of funds for police staff team building exercise?
Yes.
Okay. Go for it.
Okay, Rick. I was, uh, and I'm sure Jason would be able to answer this for me. Number four, the entire cost of this is reimbursable, and, uh, or if it's not, what is the cost to our city?
Sure. It's, um, the entire cost for the facilitator room training lunch is, it's a hundred percent reimbursable through POST, which is the, um, police training organization. Um, the only cost would be for coffee and other refreshments in the afternoon, which would be a very nominal amount. But the rest of the, uh, majority of the costs, which are $4,355, would be reimbursed from POST.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
$4,355 would be reimbursed from POST.
That was my only question, thank you.
Would you like to move to approve it?
Sure. I'd like to move to approve it.
One second.
Oh, yeah, it was a race. I think it was a tie.
Will you roll call vote? On the...
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Oh, aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
It has passed unanimously. Uh, anyone care to approve the rest of the consent calendar?
I move to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
Aye, second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is, uh, regular calendar, City Attorney, Claim for Refund of Property Tax Administration Fees and Tolling Agreement with Sacramento County.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, what I'm asking for this evening is your approval of the submission of a claim for refund of property tax administration fees to Sacramento County, and the authorization, uh, to execute a tolling agreement with the county of Sacramento. Um, the, uh, the background relating to this item is, is, uh, fairly complicated, just because of the fact that it involves, uh, property taxes, and probably Inez is the only one that fully understands this, uh, this situation. But basically, what the scenario is, is that the, the county collects property taxes on behalf of the county and the cities within the jurisdiction, uh, within, within the full county, and they charge a fee for that service, and that, that fee, known as the Property Tax Administration Fee, PTAF, is allocated to, uh, all of the communities, uh, Galt being one of them. And back in, uh, 2003 through 2005, uh, the state legislature went through a series of shuffling the various pots of money, uh, that are paid through, uh, paid to the jurisdictions as property tax, and I described those, those shifts in the staff report. But at the end of, uh, those two fiscal years, there were two new, um, pots of money, known as triple flip and VLF swap. And these two, uh, buckets of money, two revenues, started coming to the, uh, the cities, uh, in those two fiscal years. At the same time that the, the legislature adopted or set up those, uh, revenue buckets, it adopted a Revenue and Taxation Code section, which gave the county the authority to charge cities the actual cost of providing services for getting that money to us. Well, that, um, that statute and the phrase "actual cost of providing services" is a bit different than, um, the collection of administrative fees. And just to give you an example of this, down in Los Angeles County, the actual cost of, uh, collecting those pots of money and paying them to the eighty-eight cities, uh, within that county is about $35,000. But what LA County did, uh, starting in, uh, 2004, 2005, was charge this property tax administration fee as it relates to these two new buckets of money. And the amount they charged was $5 million, not $35,000. So, what, what resulted is, uh, litigation down in, uh, the county of Los Angeles by the eighty-eight cities, and, uh, they lost at the, the cities lost at the trial court level. It went to the appellate court, and the cities prevailed at the appellate court just this summer. Well, not surprisingly, with $5 million at stake, uh, the county of Los Angeles has, uh, asked for review by the Supreme Court, uh, of California. The Supreme Court has taken the matter up, and this, uh, this item is now pending. So, what a lot of other cities, uh, throughout the state have done is to submit claims to their respective counties on the theory set forth in this, uh, appellate court decision, that they could, that the counties could only charge cities the actual cost of providing the services per collection, and not this larger amount. There's possibly a timeline on going back, as far as how far back you can collect, uh, this money. So, what I have, uh, what I am proposing we do this evening is based upon that appellate court decision, that we submit a claim to Sacramento County for refund of the, uh, the money that we have at issue. And at the same time that we offer to enter into a tolling agreement, which basically says, okay, nobody, you know, nobody starts litigating, let's just call a timeout until the Supreme Court issues its decision, and then we can decide, uh, how much money we would be reimbursed. So, that's what's before you this evening. Um, I've talked to the Sacramento County Council about this item, he has indicated that the county would, uh, at least preliminarily, have no objection to entering into a tolling agreement with the, uh, the City of Galt. The amount that we have at stake, uh, for the last few years, uh, since 2004 on, is about $107,000. It doesn't mean that if the cities prevail at the Supreme Court, that we automatically are gonna get a check, uh, for $107,000, but we will have at least, uh, reserved a seat at the table with the county to have discussions about how much money, uh, we do in fact get back. And if we don't file the claim and enter into this tolling agreement, then we won't even frankly have an opportunity to have the discussion. So, are there any discuss, any questions? And Inez, did I, uh, misstate anything?
Very good job.
All right.
Any discussion on this item? We need a motion?
Uh, yes, please.
Or entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
It has been unanimously passed. I see the next item, um, Community Development Department, update on South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan and Appointment of City Representatives.
Thank you, uh, Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. Uh, the item before you tonight is, uh, just a brief update on the, uh, South Sacramento County Habitat Preservation Plan, uh, or Conservation Plan. As the city, as some of the city council are aware, we've been working on this for about five years. Um, a draft document was made available to the public in August of this year, um, and there are still ongoing meetings, and have been a number of meetings. The item before you tonight is to request that the council designate, um, one of the elected officials to serve as a representative for the City of Galt, uh, in showing support for this plan, uh, through the, uh, end of that process. Uh, currently, the Steering Committee Working Group, which is one of the many groups working on this plan, uh, is meeting with the permitting agencies, Army Corps of Engineers, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, uh, California Fish and Game, as well as others, um, to work out the details of the plan and how it can be implemented. Uh, there are a number of issues that need to be addressed, there is a technical group that is working with the, uh, various permitting agencies, uh, and will continue to do so. They are also establishing meetings at the request of, uh, the permitting agencies to include the elected officials at this point, and that is, the primary purpose of the meeting tonight is to, to have, uh, an individual selected among the council to attend meetings. Um, we have, uh, a representative, uh, from the group in the audience, Michelle, oh, there she is, um, and she's, she's a coordinator, I'm not sure exactly what your, your title is.
I'm a pretender. No, I'm, my, uh, my name is Michelle McCormick, and I'm a consultant to the applicants for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, and I help manage the process of moving the plan forward and coordinate the meetings and the public information with regards to the process.
She does a very good job.
Thank you.
Um...
Thank you.
Uh, I'm not sure how much information the council would like, I know that, uh, some of the newer council members may not be familiar with the HCP. Uh, it's certainly, uh, extended an invitation to sit down and meet with you, to go over that and bring you up to speed, um, but really, the, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get an elected official... But really, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to get an elected official appointed. And I don't know, did you want to say a few words?
I'll just briefly tell you what's happening currently. This is a process that's been going on for quite a long time. Over the last couple of years, the process has accelerated to some degree. And recently, we're reaching, I think, a really crucial point for some decision making. And in the past several weeks, really beginning in the late summer, the applicants and the agency principals determined that it would be most productive for them to meet together and find common ground. So that would be the federal agencies, the California Department of Fish and Game, and then all of the applicants, being the municipalities and the county of Sacramento, Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District and the Southeast Capitol Connector are the applicants. So the applicant and agency principals met together in early November. And at that time, the group signed a statement of commitment. So we actually got the governmental agencies and the applicants all agreeing that they were going to devote the time and the resources to address the many complicated details needed to move this plan forward. So this week, we're following up with three really critical meetings. Tomorrow, there will be a day-long meeting of technical representatives from all of those groups to identify what are the key issues with regards to the plan and at what level do those decisions need to be made. So in other words, there are issues that can be addressed at a purely technical level. There are issues that regard, that require some legal input. There are issues that require decision at the principal level. And ultimately, there are also policy-level issues. And we would like to have elected representation or elected knowledge and insight on those issues so that when they come before your council in the future, you will have at least one member who has been able to keep the entire group informed. On Thursday of this week, we will have a day-long meeting of the principals. And those high-level representatives from the cities and from the agencies again will address the issues brought before them on the, by the working group and they'll decide, are there things they can decide? Are there recommendations they can move forward with? And if not, can they develop a more specific timeline and process for reaching some decisions among all of these parties? On Friday morning, we'll have a half-day meeting. And at that time, again, we'll have the agencies, the applicants. We'll have the stakeholder, representatives of all of the stakeholders who are involved. And we are hoping to have an elected representative from the applicants as well. And the purpose of that meeting will be an overview of the two previous days and to bring everyone up to speed on exactly where we are with regards to the key issues and exactly what must happen in order to move forward. And we hope to have this elected liaison committee, we've dubbed it, and the principals meet perhaps on a monthly basis going forward in the new year with hopes of having an actual draft document ready, probably in about twelve to eighteen months.
Any questions? Michelle, when would you want this elected person to attend the first meeting?
It would be great if schedules allowed for that person to actually attend on Friday morning. If that's not possible, and I don't know if you will be there, Kurt, or hopefully Kurt will be there. And going forward, we'll be establishing those dates with significantly more notice for your schedule.
Okay. At this point, I would ask the council if anyone would like to volunteer for this very important job.
I'll volunteer.
All right. Thank you, Mary Lou.
But unfortunately, I will not be able to make the first meeting. I have a senior lunch event we've been planning for a year. But I kept up to date on some of it with Kurt already. So I'll just meet with Kurt afterwards.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Do we need to vote on that or is that okay?
No.
That's fine.
All right. So Mary Lou will be our representative. And now the star of the show, the finance department.
City of Galt Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2010, Memorandum on Internal Control and Required Communications for the year ended June 30, 2010, and Agreed-to-Fund Procedures Report on Compliance with Proposition 111, 2009-2010, Appropriations Limiting.
Boy, it better be good news after that intro. So good evening, mayor, councilmembers and members of the community. This evening, staff recommends that council accept the reports as just mentioned by the city clerk. Copies of those reports have been available in the city clerk's office for the public's review as well and for their review. Each year, the city does prepare the financial statements and makes available the financial condition of the city to the community. It's all wrapped up in the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and it is made up of three separate sections. And I would like to take a couple minutes and just walk you through some of the highlights of those areas. So the transmittal letter is a document that I prepare. And some of the accomplishments or highlights that staff members worked on over the year include the housing element. As council is aware, we worked on the general plan, but the housing element was something that was worked on over the year. We hope that it will be approved early next year. So that was something that took up staff time. That was a project that was addressed. Infrastructure modernization, as council is aware, we worked on property acquisitions for Central Galt Interchange. Some of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades were also initiated. As far as improving different types of community products or services, initiation of Walker Park construction, some of the underground facilities were initiated during the year. As far as economic development, we had our third annual winter bird festival. We are currently in the process of planning the one that will be held next month, so our fourth annual. There was also the Walmart conditional use permit. That was approved in the final EIR that was certified by council. Redevelopment was very busy as well. Two projects, as council is aware, the Galt Senior Project was initiated and they actually had their official groundbreaking in March. We also have been working with the Oddfell Building as the city manager has been the lead in that project. Thinking with parking lot improvements, adding some parking stalls in the downtown area. Public safety, as mentioned earlier this evening, we received our very first advance in June of 2009 that over the course of this last fiscal year, funding of Measure R stealth tax money to actually enable the city to hire force-worn officers and one dispatcher with exclusive use of Measure R funds. Some of the economic factors that are also included, due to the current economic condition, the city's overall economic condition declined in most areas. But one area that actually increased was we had additional revenues coming based on reimbursement for the Central Galt Interchange. So that amount did go up. But overall, you'll see most of those revenues actually declined due to charges for services, due to the lack of building activity and just the decline in property value. As far as expenditures, expenditures did decrease. We went from twenty-four point eight million overall for governmental activities to twenty-three point seven. Primarily, there was a decrease in streets and roads. Not that projects were not initiated, but they actually were not completed. So in order for it to actually record in the financial statements, there was a difference in recording.
Can I, I'll be there. Greg, I think that was the question I had that sounded. We had a decrease in roads and what was that again?
Actually, there was a decrease in the roads, but that was actually the transfer of completed projects. So we had property acquisitions. But as we all know, the Central Galt Interchange was initiated. But in the prior years, we had the annual rehab program that was initiated and completed. So when you compare the year to year, some of the projects were not completed in the current fiscal year in comparison to the prior year. Expenditures and projects were still initiated, but they just were not completed.
Okay. Never mind, she answered the question.
Because I couldn't have.
Okay. In the financial section, as you will recall, we actually prepared a pre-audit overview of the financial condition of the city and that was early in October. So with good news, it's basically the general fund. No major changes with any of the information that was conveyed to council. We remember that revenues were down just under about point three percent from budget. We were aware that property taxes did decline by about sixteen percent. Stealth tax declined as well. But that information was included in the pre-audit information back in October. So there were no surprises when the auditors actually reviewed our financial statements. So that was definitely good news. On the general fund expenditure side, as reported at that time, our mark expenditures were less than budget by over three hundred thousand dollars, about a three percent less than the budget amount. And some of the projects were just not initiated. We had some savings from salaries from frozen positions. There were some across-the-board operating reductions. There was also the furlough that was implemented back in April. So that, it was eleven days, that will impact this year. That was being reported this evening, as well as this year, ten-eleven. It's with good news that we can report that our reserves are fully funded for the fiscal year ending 2010. But as always, we want to say, I guess, be critical of some of the state takeaways. One of the significant takeaways that the state had in fiscal year nine-ten was the amount for redevelopment agency. There was over one point one million dollars that was shifted from local revenue sources from the RDA to the state. There's another two hundred thousand that's scheduled to be paid in May of 2011. Luckily, when the ballot initiative, constitutional amendment was, Prop 22, was put on the ballot, it was approved by the voters overwhelmingly. So now we can at least try to protect local revenues. In Culture Recreation Fund, there were no surprises there as well. Market revenues were up. Expenditures, again, were down primarily in personnel savings. In the Enterprise Fund, that's an area I would like to spring up. Basically, revenues were down based on some of the connection fees, no building activity, so the connection fees were down. And there was an increase in expenditures primarily in the sewer fund related to the bio solids off-hauling and upgrade costs. The last section in the CAFR is the statistical section and that basically gives you ten years of history information out of blocks. The next report that we are reviewing is the Memorandum on Internal Control and Required Communications. There were no material weaknesses noted by the auditors. However, they did note two items that they did want to bring to our attention that we could possibly improve on. The first one has to do with PCI compliance. And basically, we accept credit cards with the city and it's not a requirement, but based on standards, the National Institute of Standards and Technology, they recommend that local governments try to adopt some of their standards for operations when we collect credit cards. So we are actually looking at that process right now. And the bottom line is, we have to at least be aware of what that third-party processor does with the information. So even though we technically outsource that process, we still have to be aware of what the processes are. So that was an area that we are currently working on. And finally, there is a change on fund balance reporting. That will take effect next year. Basically, once council approves the financial statements this evening, staff members will take back these numbers and re-crunch them and put them in a new format just so we're ready for next fiscal year. So we are totally aware of what the new reporting requirements are and we'll address that in a timely manner. There are no costs with the acceptance of the financial statements this evening. I am joined by both the county managers, Donna Krug and Michelle Neely, as well as the partner for Mason Associates, Catherine Nguyen. And if council has any questions, we'd be more than allowed to address them. But if not, that's staff's recommendation at this point.
Are there any questions or discussions?
None for me.
No.
No? So we need to accept this. Is there a motion to accept the report?
Emotionally accept the report as presented.
One second. If there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Did our county attorney want to say something?
No, I thought you were looking to me for a motion, but somebody picked it up.
Ran off with it, yeah.
Good, good. Any communication, oh, wait a minute. Backup Police Department Cops Hiring Program Grant.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council. Tonight, we have before your recommendation to approve a grant award from the Cops Hiring Program from the federal government for six hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-two dollars, slated to be funded for the next three years to fulfill a frozen sergeant's position and one additional officer. This is money from the federal government from the Hiring and Recovery Act and the Cops Program. We initially applied for it two years ago for four officers. Were denied, didn't get anything. And this year, we were awarded two officers instead of the four that we applied for. The grant's pretty specific about what you have to do to keep the employees employed after you use the grant funds for three years. You have to fund them for one additional year. That's why the Measure R Fund is slated for one person. And it's also pretty specific about if you don't hire an additional person, it has to be used for a called-back or laid-off person or a frozen position, which is where the sergeant's position is at now. We spoke to the grant administrators and from all that I heard last time I spoke to the city manager, we want the money. So what we're asking for you folks to do tonight is appropriate the backfill we pay and then they pay us back. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Questions or discussion?
Yeah. I had some concerns on this when I read it. And I think, well, just let me ask, I want to get out in the open. If there's a delay in that position, will that cause any issues with that grant?
Delay in what position?
If I ask to keep the sergeant's position frozen until we get a new chief in, is my concern. Since you're going to be retiring and have that chief do the hiring of the sergeant, is that going to affect our grant for that position?
Well, affect it how? You're going to lose money.
That's why I'm asking. Are we going to lose money?
Yes.
What I mean by affect is that going to affect it in that position and in that manner?
The way the grant works is you have thirty-six months to expend the grant funds, six hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and that clock starts ticking ninety days from the date that we accept the application, which we've already, which we've already done. So if we don't fill that position in ninety days, then every month we don't fill it after that, we lose those funds and we can never get those back. And so if we delay for six months or however many months it is, every month you delay, you do give up those funding opportunities for that month, however many months it might be.
Just for that month, right?
However many months it is.
However it takes to get that position filled, correct? One more question I had was, how would I, where are we looking for the sergeant? How are we getting the word out? Are we looking in-house first? And if nobody qualifies or can pass the sergeant's test, are we looking outside to that? How's that, how's that deemed?
Well, we haven't started anything yet until you guys approve the funding. Once you do, it would be my preference that we open it up inside and outside and let everybody compete and the best people get promoted.
I have a comment when you get through, if it falls in with what you're asking.
My, my only concern is I would like to stipulate, and this is just me, that we try hiring in-house first. And that's just my, my opinion. I don't know what anybody else thinks, but that was my only stipulation on that. And then we can look for outside as deemed necessary if we can't find a good candidate in-house.
Let me ask it in a different way, okay? So if we approve this tonight, does this, this is for the funding and I appreciate what's getting the grant and staff working on it because it only comes around once in a while. But does this include the hiring process? We approve it, say we approve the funding, does it, is in this package here? I don't see that it's really in there. Does this include the hiring process of the two officers? Is that a separate one?
Well, actually, the hiring process is not a council determination. It's something that staff needs the appropriation, have the funds in the budget. And then it's staff's responsibility to go and do the recruitment. So just like any position that we have in the budget, once the, once the position is approved by the city council, then we carry out and fulfill the recruitment.
That's why I'm asking the question.
Correct.
Okay. So, next question, our next part of that. In the sergeant's position, which was a part-time, and I understand why we're merging the funds together because it makes sense to do that. We are advertising, are we, we'll probably, let me just put it this way. We're proposing, one of you, okay, our HR, we're proposing to promote within one of our officers as a sergeant? Or is it, are we proposing to promote within but accepting applications from outside agencies?
Well, Galt's typical process with all of our recruitment is to find the best candidate available for the job. And so typically, we open up positions, both internal and external for the position. And our hope always is that our internal candidates will compete for the job. So we'll have people that are interested in the position, that will study hard, do well on the task. And those people will, one of those individuals will prevail in the recruitment. But our first and foremost responsibility is to find the best, most qualified person for that position. And so that's, that's the mentality we always go into with these recruitments.
Okay, I have several other questions, but unfortunately, I don't think I'm in a position to answer those in an open meeting, ask those questions in an open meeting. I have some concerns about the process. I understand what you're saying. But I'm like Mike, I want to give, you know, our officers, I believe, that are really qualified and dedicated, you know, the opportunity to, if they so desire. And I know we want to get.
And they will absolutely have the opportunity.
And they will absolutely have the opportunity.
And I don't want, well, again, I'm going to bite my tongue, okay? Because I know that Steve's going to tell me that I'm making inappropriate comments, because I'm evaluating something, and that's not my position.
Well, is there a way for some hiring? I don't know if that applies here, but you first of all, look within, and then, after you've done all of looking within, then you put it outside? There's steps for doing that kind of hiring too also, right?
Well, we can recruit any manner that we choose, where there's no rules, there's no federal regulations or anything that says how we recruit. And what I'm telling you is that we want the best person for the job, and we believe that by having an open recruitment, it not only, it makes our own applicants strive harder, work harder, and do what they need to do to get themselves in a position to compete, but it sends the right message to the organization that you're not going to be handed a position, that just because you've been here for so long, we're not going to give it to you, and you need to compete. And we want the best person. Our city deserves the best person for that job. And so our philosophy has always been, we want the best person for the job. Certainly, we want to prepare everybody in the city to advance and move up, but we don't want people to feel like they're going to be handed something. And so to be able to compete and then to come out on top, I think sends the right message to the organization. That's the way GALT has always operated.
Let me ask, do we have a current sergeant's list?
No.
No.
Okay. And why not? But then again, see, I'm starting to lean one direction, I believe, but...
Well, typically, recruitment lists only last for one year.
Okay.
And then we, and it's been more than one year since we had a sergeant recruitment.
How many sergeants do we currently staff right now, Chief?
We have five in investigations and, sorry, five in patrol and one in investigation. But we have one frozen also.
So that, so we actually have six then? Okay. And is that in patrol?
Six in patrol if we were fully staffed, correct.
We will have six after we fill this...
After we fill the position, okay.
Correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, quick question here on the side. Chief, where do we stand as far as our levels of people as far as the Matrix study is concerned?
As far as supervisors or staffing? Staff. Patrol officers? I think with Measure R, we're above what Matrix recommended as far as staffing needs.
Very good.
And I was going to ask too, didn't, what did Matrix, the study say about the need for, it seems like I remember that that was one of the specifications they made, that we needed more supervision? Would you, can you recall that?
Yes, I'm assuming everyone knows the Matrix study was commissioned probably in 2006 and implemented in 2007 by previous council. And it was somewhat of a roadmap for, you know, how the department should manage its staffing and supervision levels, manage its commitment time, and, you know, and how many patrol officers, and those type of suggestions. At the time, we had four sergeants in patrol, and the Matrix study suggested we needed additional sergeants, one for each shift, because we run six shifts. As the schedule works, there's, the first block has got, the gold block has got day swing and graveyard, and then the silver block has got day swing and graveyard. There was a real deficiency. We were running from 3:00 AM to 7:00 AM with no supervision, with teams, or the eight-month guy was kind of supervising the four-month guy by themselves out there at 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. And frankly, I mean, we didn't have any disasters, but considering we had so many brand-new people, that it wasn't really the recommended is the right way to do it. So we promoted in 2007 two additional sergeants. And then we have, now we're up to one for each patrol team and then one for detectives.
I think we're to the point where we want to decide if we want this money or not. So I'm opening it to the council.
I do want this money. I just want to let Jason know and understand that we most certainly do not want to hand this to anybody by any means. By going in-house, we don't mean just to give somebody those stripes, they need to be qualified and pass that test. By no means, that's a safety hazard, as far as I'm concerned, to our community, if we just hand our sergeants a position to somebody who's not qualified for that position. And I'm good with this, but I still have the stipulation, and I know, you know, I'm just thinking, there's got to be some way we can look, try to in-house first, and then we can go outside. That's just, I'm old school, and that's just the way, I'm used to it being done. And I just, that's just my one stipulation I'd like to see occur.
Let me make two comments, and I understand where the council's coming from. First is, this discussion really isn't part of this agenda item.
Right.
So we probably shouldn't even be having this discussion right now, but I'm going to answer the questions and so forth. One of the concerns that we have, which kind of relates to what the initial question was, which is, what's the timing on the grant funds? If we did an internal recruitment, it takes several months to do, to be able to distribute the books, to do the studying and the testing, even if it's just, let's say we just did internal, okay? And let's say we went through that process and it took us three months to figure that out, and we figured, we got to the end of that, and there were no qualified candidates, nobody passed the test, and then we wanted to go outside. So now you have another three-month process. And so now you've got six months in that, and you're beyond, so you've lost three months' worth of grant funding for the position. So that's one of the concerns of kind of pushing it out and doing two separate processes. If you, if your first process fails, then you've now lost some opportunity for that position.
I understand what you're saying, Jason. And thank you for entertaining me, for the answers to that.
The recommendation is to approve the grant awards.
Is there a motion to that effect at this time?
I, I know what it's like writing grants, and I know what it's like when you lose even a month's worth of money, so I move to approve the grant.
I'll second it. Call for the vote. Any other questions?
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
I just would noted that I'd like to see it done in-house first, please.
Councilmember Shelton? Wait a minute, was that a yes?
Yes, I said, I with the note.
I'm going to vote yes, but I concur with your comment, describe to go inside first.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
And Mayor Pin?
Aye.
So, it passed four-one with some interesting thoughts that were along with it. The next item is communication. Do we have any communication at this time from anybody?
I do.
Okay.
Good, have quite a few, actually.
Uh-oh.
First of all, I want to say that the Christmas parade was, even though we had a lot of rain, we really had a good time, and I was really amazed at all the floats that were out there and all the effort that everyone put into it.
Yes, you were.
My, at least my gal remembered to put a canopy over the top of ours, so I was pretty warm. I had a great time, and I think it was really well organized, so I want to thank Parks and Recreation and, gosh, what's her name?
Let me just provide some clarification on the agenda. The communication section of the agenda is typically for written communication, that the city council or staff as we...
Oh, I thought that was something, I'm sorry.
At the end, there is an opportunity for council comments and future agenda items, which we will get to in a few minutes.
I thought we were there, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I think I didn't say communication. It probably sounded like comments.
Oh.
So that was my fault.
There you go.
It is, it's my fault.
That's okay.
So, let me rephrase, is there any written communications at this time?
I do have one bit of communication.
All right, city manager?
The city received a nice letter from the GALT Giving Project, the Thanksgiving Basket Project, that many in the community participate in. The city of GALT, employees participate in this year, as we did last year. We provided canned tuna and chicken, and the churches and community groups and others participated, and it's really become a great event for the community. The baskets were prepared over in the Lowton Center, about 110 families that received Thanksgiving baskets as a result of this effort. There were families that were identified in need in the community, families were identified by the schools, and so the schools participated. It was a great thing, and so we got a nice thank you letter from those that were, the steering committee, that thanking the city of GALT for its support in that annual event. So I wanted to thank the council as well as staff for their participation in that.
Thank you, everybody that participated. Is there any other communication, written communication?
I didn't say that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll do better. Okay, at this point, we will adjourn and go through the redevelopment agency. Board members, Powers, here, Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Pin?
Here.
Any public comments?
I have no speaker sheet.
Then we will go to the consent calendar.
Okay, Cruz?
Second.
Go call. Okay. Vice, Board Member Powers?
Aye.
Yes. Singleton?
Yes.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Pin?
Aye.
Now we're going to adjourn and go to the regular GALT city council. City Clerk's report.
Congratulations to our new council members. And just a few reminders up through our next meeting. Just a reminder, the December 8th Parks and Recreation Commission meeting has been canceled. There will be a Planning Commission meeting on December 9th in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, and that takes us to our next council meeting. I think that's all the reminders I have.
Is that all for my...
And there's a senior luncheon on Friday, December 10th at...
What was that? Was it about, I think we ought to be on the committee.
Yes, I was going to ask you to mention that, so have it in.
Actually, we're advertising right now for all of our committees and commissions. We have vacancies on everything except for solid waste, so there's probably ten or twelve committees.
Committees, sure.
Please submit a letter of interest. We'd like to have the letters by December 15th in our office, bring them into the city clerk's office, or send an email. And I think that's it. But you need to finish. What time's the senior lunch on December 15th?
From 12:00 to 2:00 at Chabola Center. And I think they can still sign up tomorrow. Call South County Services.
Sorry? Okay.
Okay, now we're ready for comments by the city council members, and I believe we'll start with, oh, sorry. Staff, comments?
No comments.
This is not my strong point.
Can't wait. Can't wait till we look back on this video.
Yes, no. Vice Mayor?
I did want to thank Parks and Rec and Patrice for the wonderful Christmas parade. Given out range, I had a really good time. And I did think that, you know, there was a lot of participation by a lot of people out there, and there were some really great floats and lots of lights and all kinds of nifty things. So it was really very nice. So thank you for all the work that you put into it. And thank Patrice for me too, please. The senior luncheon you already mentioned is for citizens 60 and older in our town. It's a free luncheon, it's called a holiday luncheon. We have it every year, it'll be this Friday. We have everybody, all these lovely people here are going to be helping us serve, and it's just a great time to get out there and see a lot of the seniors in our community. And they really appreciate it, and it's the one party that, maybe the only party, that some of them get to go to the holiday time. So they really get out, they get decked up out, and they really have a great time. We are working with the police department and the fire department, South County Services is for toy drives for needy kids in town. You can drop off all of your toys at the police station, or the two fire stations, or at South County Services. The giveaway will be on the 23rd of December, and if there's anyone that needs to sign up, their family, come down to South County Services and sign up. And then, the last thing I'd like to bring up is, I'd like to bring back to council, hopefully I'm saying this right, the policy on the mayor, the term of the mayor, instead of it being one year, I'd like to address, readdress, putting it back up to two years.
Got the council procedure guidelines?
Yes.
So we can put that on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Singleton?
Waiting for you to address me. The, oh, boy, now you come back.
She's been there for a while.
Well, she had a cover on her trailer, I didn't. I just wanted to give you public garbage over that. Actually, you know, the parade was wonderful, you guys did an awesome job. All the volunteers, for the police department, oh, there you go, I'm sorry, Chief, there you go, and the fire department, it was awesome. And most of all, to our citizens, they were out there in droves, raining, just out there. What a lot of fun, that was just great. Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, thank you, CSD, thank you. It was great, I was happy to be out there, very happy to be out there. And I look forward to working with staff, our next four years of these endeavors. I also have some things I'd like to revisit. Resolution number 2007-112.
Which is?
Yeah, oh, you want to tell me what it is? It's the, what was the resolution? The use of bottled water by GALT. And also, our GALT code, Chapter 2.16, subsection Point 070. And that's our powers and duties, city manager. And also revisit GALT code, Chapter 3.40, Section Point 150, subsection C. And it's the, about the, that's our Measure R hiring, getting task force officer for our Measure R funds.
I would ask at this time, normally, we're looking at the next meeting for these agendas, but that's quite a bit. Will we be able to space this, or how do we handle this situation? Someone over there, city attorney, city manager?
Well, on some of these, I'd like to maybe get a little bit more information as far as what the expectation is of staff on these items being brought back. Is it something that council member will present some ideas to the city councils, or is the expectation that staff prepare some level of work effort? If it's just a matter of the council member wanting to put something on the agenda to discuss with the city council, very little staff efforts involved, in which case it could very easily go in the next meeting. If there's some level of staff effort involved in preparing some things, then we probably need to look at how to space these. So we need a little bit more information.
Just going to be, there's nothing that staff is going to have to do, except that we need to just, I want to discuss some of those issues.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah, just put it on the agenda, yeah, just discuss, yeah.
Well, let me recap on that. I'd like to recommend that as a council member, and I have a couple of items too, that I would offer to get with appropriate staff. And I think that sets a good precedence for us as elected officials. So if we had, because I can see where you have two or three, I have two, you have two, you have two.
Sure.
You know, that could be the end of it. And then we can get with appropriate staff and help to prioritize it. Maybe something that's brought back, and I don't know what we have for, it may be a busy calendar for the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, I believe.
What I'll do is get together with the mayor and the city clerk, who typically helps set the agenda and work on those things, and see what it looks like for the next one, and if we need to reprioritize or move things around based on what the agenda looks like, then we can do that.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor, if I could just, I want to amplify one of the comments the manager made, and that's, I mean, on these two topics, powers and duties of the city manager and then Measure R, we can certainly put them on as a generic topic, but there's a lot of potential issues, for example, that might relate to the powers and duty of the city manager. And if at staff level, if we had some idea as to what the issue is, then we can come to the meeting prepared to address the issue. If that's not the desire, if you want to leave it general at this point, council member, you certainly have the discretion to do it, but what that might result at times is in a continuance, so that once the issue does surface, that we then have the opportunity to research and provide the full council with any relevant information.
Okay. At this moment, I'd like to just hold off on that until we can get together and work this out, and then we'll bring it back to council and have an open discussion then for that.
So you'll have more specifics?
We'll have more specifics. I'm not prepared to give all of that. I had a lot of other things going on that I wasn't able to get with that point yet.
Anything further, Councilman Shelton or city attorney?
I haven't even started yet.
Okay.
Hold on.
Okay.
Well, first of all, Mike, Mark, Mary, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do us proud. I know we're all doing... Yep, do us proud, I know we'll all do a good job and, uh, do the two, uh, Payne and Powers, everyone ever noticed that?
Payne and Powers.
(laughing) Congratulations, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a couple of items I'd like to bring, uh, forward. Uh, one is, uh, I've discussed lightly with, uh, Steve, uh, this was something actually that we had started a few years back. I'd like to bring back an item, uh, to council for the, and I'm gonna phrase it kind of this way, it's a re-establishment of a steering ad hoc committee to review our process, like you had mentioned about the mayor and vice mayor. We did that, you know, about a year and a half ago, uh, when I got elected, uh, re-elected, you know, my three-year valedictal. Uh, we brought back the Public Safety Advisory Committee, and we wrote what our guidelines were. Uh, and we did it with, uh, Measure R, but that was a campaign issue, and we hadn't do that, so we just kind of stopped, for whatever reason. So, I would like to, uh, bring that back and discuss it. And I don't know if we can bring that back at the next meeting, or we need to wait until, uh, January, I will get with you and, you know, kind of help figure that out. But that's to review and update so that, you know, all of our programs, when we conduct a meeting, basically, they're kind of running the same. I mean, I think some of them, we haven't looked at them in maybe ten or twelve years, that's what we found before when we started there.
So, just to make, to make sure I understand, so what you're talking about doing is, is considering appointing a council subcommittee, to work with staff, that to review the, the bylaws and guidelines associated with all of our committees and commissions?
Yeah, thanks for taking those words and putting it into proper perspective.
(laughing)
Uh, there was another item that at the Public Safety Advisory Committee that we held on Monday night, uh, there was a group of people that came to us, uh, NAB, Neighborhood Awareness, Mike is the board, that, uh, it's a program to work with juveniles that kind of go astray, uh, kind of maybe do some things wrong.
Excuse me, it's a neighborhood accountability-
Accountability, thank you.
Yeah.
Board. And, uh, I would like to bring that up, and, uh, I had talked to the group about maybe in our January meeting, we didn't talk about whether the first meeting in January or the second, and it would be a presentation. And I feel that, uh, it was proposed to the safety committee, and I proposed the question, is this something that we're interested enough to support it and move it to council? And let council hear, you know, with, uh, maybe some, uh, recommendations, or, uh, we would support it, the program. I mean, that's the intent of it.
So, you, so your suggestion would be to put something under a, a future council meeting, under presentations, where this group could come and make a presentation before council talk about what the program is, and at that point, the council can make a decision on what they want to do.
And they were receptive, we threw it in January, so, because I said, we have a busy calendar for, you know, like making the next, you know, two or three meetings.
Yeah, and I would suggest that they could, um, just contact the city clerk directly, and get on the agenda, whatever's convenient for them.
Yeah, because I was bringing it forward, so I thought, well, maybe I should.
That'd be fine, all right.
Uh, hope everyone has a great week.
Yep.
Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Nice shirt and suit. At least we do need easy up on our, on our, uh, float next year, we-
Our trailer.
And more candy, please. Little one is going, uh, soft, please, soft candy.
I'll, I'll buy the extra candy next year.
Also, uh, that evening, towards the, the end of that evening, I don't know if anybody realizes this, we actually had a hero on the group. Uh, towards the end of this, uh, event, several of the officers were weighed down by an individual stating that someone was complaining of chest pains. And the group went over, but someone else was dragged along, and made proper diagnosis actually got, I think, made a big difference towards saving this individual's life. And just wanted to make note that, uh, Councilwoman Singleton, good job.
Thank you.
That is? Um, I wanted to mention, uh, the lighting of the Christmas tree, I thought that was very nice, and I wanted to thank the, uh, shop local group for all their hard work, but also, uh, Parks and Rec, once again. Oh, goodness, yes, the city tots, they came out and they did a wonderful job, thank you.
Excuse me, uh, Mayor, one thing, I'd also like to thank Mr. Al over there for doing such a great job doing Santa. I'd wish, yeah.
Okay, yes, thank you, one and all. Um, well-
First name's Al.
I wanted to remind everybody of the Rural Urban Connection Strategy, especially our council members. It is sponsored by SECOG, which has a big influence on what happens. And this one, I'm gonna give you some of the bullet points. Highlight the role of agriculture in the region. Explore agricultural conditions and challenges. Identify market opportunities for expanding regional agriculture activity. Share innovations from the project that will help shape our region's future economic and environmental health. These are all things that are important to us, sponsored by SECOG, it is Friday, um, this, that's this Friday, December the tenth, starts at seven-thirty in the morning, and it lasts till, I believe, about eleven-thirty, it's a half-day event. They still have openings, it's at the, um, Convention Center in downtown Sacramento. Um, if you wanted to make reservations, I do have that information, but the last time I talked to Mike McKeever, he said there was still room for people just to drop in. Um, and along with that, I would like to have, uh, I'd like to arrange to have someone from SECOG, possibly, Mike McKeever, come and do a presentation to our council, so that other than the one council member that goes to the meetings, the rest of you know what's going on and what it's about, um, because they are a very powerful, uh, committee. No, they're not a committee, they're a huge organization, they're council government, and they fund lots of money. And we want to be in their favor.
Is there a particular topic you'd like them to discuss, or just an overview of what they do as an organization, and?
I'm thinking mostly just to, uh, educate the rest of the council members who aren't, don't have the opportunity. They don't have the fun of going to all those meetings, because they are important. Um, and then, the thing that I wanted to put on my, on the list, was the GALT bus that, uh, you emailed me about to discuss what makes sense to do with it or, or not. And the other thing I want to do, or I want us to look into doing, is look at possibly a community events committee. Um, one of the things, when you have a small town like GALT, if you have a lot of things going on, if the church is having an activity, and the school's having an activity, and the city's having an activity, uh, it's hard to get, um, enough people out to make it really worthwhile for each of those groups. My, my main goal is to try to put together a community calendar, stimulate all the organizations of thinking ahead, you know, like start in January to think what you want to do for the rest of the year, so that we can, um, have more attendance. And I think it's something that, um, would be very beneficial to this community. And then we know if we're gonna have a parade, or if we're gonna have a tree down there, up here, or wherever. It just seems like something we might consider. Thank you. Um, and lastly, I just want to close by saying again, that I'm, I'm very enthusiastic about the city council that we have. I'm looking forward to, um, a year of progress, but the outside goal is a year of unity, uh, between, and I think we're working on it already, between the city and the schools and the businesses. I think we have wonderful opportunities here, we have the best police department we've ever had, we have a great fire district, uh, we have great volunteer people, and we, as a town, are gonna be, be competing with the other, with all the other towns to bring industry jobs to our community. And I think we have a good head start with what we have going, I think that, uh, we just need to make the most of our resources, and when things start picking up, we will be ready, we will be number one, people are gonna want to locate in our community. So, um, unless there are no other comments, I will adjourn this first meeting and say congratulations to everybody, and see you next time, you did a great job.
(laughing)
Meeting adjourned.
I do.